Here.
Commissioner Larson.
Here.
Commissioner Jordan, absent. Commissioner Jacobs.
Here.
Commissioner Bartlett.
Here.
Vice Chair Lodge.
Here.
Chair Justice.
Here. Mr. Cato, are there any requests for continuances, withdrawals, postponements, or addition of agenda items?
No, there are not.
Okay, about any announcements or appeals?
Yes, I would like to announce the appeal of the Planning Commission's denial of the medical marijuana storefront collective dispensary permit at 2915 Delavina. That was appealed with 10 minutes to go on the appeal clock, and it will be heard on April 12, 2011, and we're hoping to get a Planning Commission representative to go to that meeting as well. We can talk about it at the administrative agenda.
Thank you. At this point, I'd like to open up the meeting for public comment on matters which are not on our agenda, and seeing no one coming forward and seeing no green speaker slips, I will now close the public portion of the meeting and move on to our first item, which is a consent item regarding the application of Amy Yvonne Prots' agent for the property located at 1519 Shoreline Drive. And I'd like to ask if there's any motion to waive the staff report reading. Mr. Bartlett?
Thank you, Chair Justice. I would like to make a motion to waive the staff report if it pleases the Council or the Commission.
Second the motion.
Second by Ms. Lodge. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
At this point, I'd like to provide the applicant with the opportunity to summarize...
Hi, I'm Amy Yvonne Prots, and we're here to answer any of your questions.
I'm David DeLaurie, the contractor that's going to be doing the remodel on the property.
Okay. Are there any questions from the Commission, from the applicant, or the applicant's contact?
Just a comment, Mr. Chair, if I may. Just for anybody watching, perhaps wondering, you know, how we're acting on this without any staff report and so on, but we did have a site visit and didn't have a chance to see the property and see what the issues are. And for my part, I don't have any questions.
Thank you. I'm sorry. We do have a light on. Ms. Schwartz?
Thank you. My only question for the applicant, if this is the appropriate time, surrounds the landscaping plan, which was raised by staff on page five. Is this an appropriate time for that, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Okay, great. We spoke with you briefly on Tuesday about the current landscaping, and you know staff's proposal, so I was wondering if you've given any further thought to kind of a redesign of the type of landscaping that you have out there at the Bluff Top.
We have, and we looked at different options for different plans rather than take out the lawn. We're okay with that.
Remove the lawn and install more drought tolerant?
Correct, and we've looked at other options and other grass that are not, don't take as much water, and we have looked at other options. We will work, we definitely will.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Bartlett?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, regarding that item, I was happy to see that staff included Condition B3 and the conditions of approval, which gives the applicant flexibility on the landscape design so that we are not design reviewers here at the podium. It sets the standard for how much water, which the issue really was drainage over the bluff face, so this sets the criteria but gives you the flexibility. If you so choose to keep some lawn, you have to make other adjustments in your landscape to get there. So I think you've got the flexibility that you need, and hopefully you recognize that as well.
We do, and we appreciate that.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no other lights on, I would like to open up the public portion of the meeting, of the hearing. There is no in attendance, so we'll close that on this specific item and bring it back to the Commission for discussion and a motion. Would anybody like to start? Don't all step forward at once, seeing that there's no... Yes, Ms. Lodge.
Okay. What do we... Will I move that the coastal development permit be approved and that the application be approved, that this project be approved? And the findings and the conditions in the staff report.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Ms. Lodge and Ms. Schwartz. Mr. Bartlett?
I was just going to second it.
Okay. Any further discussion on the motion? Okay, all in favor of the motion as proposed?
Aye.
Aye. Posed. Motion carries unanimously. This project is appealable to the City Council within 10 days. Thank you very much, and you've set the record for the most, the quickest decision of 2011.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Okay, let's move on to our administrative agenda, and I'm looking to our staff hearing officer liaison to give us any updates on items of critical interest or importance to the Commission.
Not critical interest at this time, just moving along.
Okay.
We will have some interesting things coming up, however.
Good. Thank you.
Me to do the HLC one while I'm here because that is a very interesting one.
Please do.
Thank you. I attended the HLC meeting yesterday, and it was a very interesting meeting. There were many items that would interest us. One of them was the Museum of Natural History and the butterfly exhibit, which was proposed to be temporary for 10 years. And so the HLC suggested temporary for two years, and with regards to the master plan and some other things, but that was rather interesting. The other thing that I thought was especially relevant to us had to do with Ellen Kanto, and it had to do with a scale of the plans. And so my concern is that the service area that they had presented to HLC was five feet wider than our approved set, and the material for the driveway was no longer the herringbone hatched brick that was shown in the plans we approved, but was now stamped concrete colored. So we have, I'm going to just ask that the plan be scaled to make sure that what's being reviewed is the same as what was approved, and to have whoever on staff would do that to make sure that the approved set is what's being followed. And yesterday's was concerned with the scope of the trash, the service area, and the front entry. And so with these elements that had to be, that somebody was caught with a scale, I just think we need to have the plan checked again. And that's my report about that. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Jacobs?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I share Ms. Larson's ongoing concern about this project because both of us have been on the Commission while this has gone through, as have you. It's end-of-life stages and attempted resuscitation. Is the five-foot enlargement above ground or below ground, Ms. Larson?
It's above ground. As you come in the main driveway, if you take a sharp right turn, there's a service area there that actually is big enough to accommodate more cars. It's big enough for trucks, and that sort of back-of-house, but delivery-for-the-restaurant sort of area. But there was a reduction in landscape and more pavement proposed and a widening of that pavement by five feet. So that was, and the opening was widened by five feet as well. And that was scaled by somebody being alert. So that's my concern, and that's why I'm asking that the project be checked to be sure that it's in compliance with our resolution because I'm concerned for that. And if it's not, it needs to come back to us. It's tough on the HLC to have to scale the plans. I mean, somebody just was alert enough to catch it by their eye, so...
I would have a question at this point for staff because I don't think it comes back to Planning Commission. I think that it's in the hands and under the guidance of the Historic Landmarks Commission at this point, and that's, we continue, as Ms. Larson is our liaison, to be apprised of it, but I don't think that there's a point at which it comes back to us unless there's a large change beyond a substantial conformance. Is that correct?
Chair Justice, Commissioner Jacobs, that's normally true. I mean, that is true. It would have to, the design is normally up to the discretion of the HLC. Now, if the design were to change so radically that, you know, that it was a lot different than what the Planning Commission approved, we would probably bring it back for some sort of substantial conformance determination. I'm not sure that a widening of a driveway and pavement to five feet would get to that point, but I'll definitely be looking into this and asking the planner to look at it as well.
I would say that the sore spot comes from the fact that when the Planning Commission approved the master plan for this property, many concessions were made based on the applicant's declaration that they were restoring a historic building and that subsequently that building was torn down to the dirt and has been rebuilt larger than its original building. All of that was done in a manner that I think has concerned some people who would have anticipated a different path. And the concessions that were made at the Commission were based upon historic renovation. I think that's why we tend to question some of the processes in this particular building and this particular developer's patterns of inch-by-inch aggressive erosion of approvals. And it does not, as you say, come back here unless it is appealed by the neighbors or appealed or in some way questioned by another body. But we are asking as a courtesy that we be, that a scaled drawing be produced so that the HLC has a chance to very carefully observe any changes. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jacobs. Ms. Schwartz?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On February 10, I attended the downtown parking committee meeting, and I want to highlight one interesting point of interest. There was a guest speaker at the committee meeting. Andrea White is the CEO of Bike Station, a nationwide nonprofit that installs and manages bike stations. And it turns out that Santa Barbara, not to our surprise, is really a best practice in bicycle station development and utilization, and she explained to everyone that based on the success with the city of Santa Barbara as a partner, they are going to be rolling out these types of bike stations. Ours, as everybody knows, is at the Granada Garage nationwide. And from a survey that she's conducted of the customer users, 43% of those now using the bike station were previous drivers into the downtown area. 10% are coming into the downtown via their bicycle to connect with public transit, and 68% of the users are using this as their sole means of transportation to work into the downtown area. So with that, let me just compare those with nationwide. Our 43%, those who were driving, is 33% nationwide. 10% who are connecting with transit, 62% nationwide, often in large metropolitan areas where there is more public transportation. And lastly, we have 68% riding to work using the bicycle as their sole means nationwide. That's less than that at 54%. So she's going to continue to partner and offer any incentive she can to make this viable for the city. And at this point, we have a pretty solid kind of equitable mix between women who are using it and men, which also is not comparable to the rest of the country. There in other cities and other areas, there are more men using it, so we have our whole community on balance using the bike station.
Thank you.
So that's the readout. And then just very quickly, also that same day in the evening, I attended the Transportation and Circulation Committee meeting, and I'll just comment there that that committee is sending a letter to council, and if our Commission is interested in receiving the final draft, maybe we could have staff provide that. This committee is going to be seeking approval from the council to redefine itself as an enterprise fund. They want financial autonomy. They feel that their committee funds are too vulnerable, and in a time of budget constraints, their funds could be tapped for other general fund use. And so with that concern, they're going to be seeking formal approval to move in the enterprise zone direction. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Schwartz. Mr. Bartlett?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As the ABR liaison, I wanted to report on the most recent ABR meeting of February 7. There were two items on it, I think, of importance to the Commission. The first was the review of the 101 three-lane proposal at the freeway at Selena Street for the on-and-off ramps, and I know Commissioners Jacobs and Schwartz were in attendance along with myself at the subcommittee meeting, but the subsequent review at ABR did not go very well in terms of the elimination of the bulk of the landscape, and I would ask that we try and have an ABR representative at our March 3 PC meeting, hopefully Chris Gilliland, who's on the subcommittee and also the landscape person at ABR, I think would be a perfect choice, but as long as we have representation, I think it would be important when we have that come before the Commission. And then the other item was a follow-up on the 535 East Montecito Street, the big housing project that City Ventures has now acquired. And it was interesting, this was the fourth time that it was there for review after final, and it was to accommodate the attributes that we love to put on projects here at the Commission, which is solar, and I just wanted to report on the ramifications of what happened. This project now, in order to accommodate the solar on the roof, has had to go to a concrete S tile to have the strength required to access the solar panels. So the third-floor roofs with the solar panels no longer match the two-piece barrel clay tile that we soluborously put on the entire project. So now we have a mismatch of materials. So I think it's something that we should be aware of in the future, and I think the other thing compounding the installation on that project is, you know, obviously our street grid is 45 degrees rotated from the perfect angle that we would like to see solar equipment, and then compounded by the hip-shaped roofs leads to a very patchwork-looking array of solar equipment on the roof. So anyway, that's why I think it's taken them four meetings with ABR to get something that was palatable, but it's definitely not easy to always accomplish with the architectural style that we have in mind, so...
Thank you, Mr. Bartlett. Mr. Cato, do we have any joint meetings scheduled with HLC in our near future?
Yes, we do. April 27, we have a joint meeting with the HLC. That's a Wednesday special meeting. It'll be a special meeting for the Planning Commission, a Wednesday of a normal HLC day. The subject is another preliminary review of the National History Museum. We've made some progress since, well, God, it'll be nine months ago, eight months ago that they came, and they've made quite a bit of progress, I think, and they want to come back and make sure that they're on the right track, you know, as far as HLC and PC are concerned.
Would it be possible to augment our agenda with the HLC that day to discuss the trade-offs that are posed by their guidelines on energy efficiency and our desire to reflect good solar and other energy efficiencies in the projects that we approve and review? I think we were talking about this at the end of Ms. Hubbell's term, and the interest of the Commission never got followed up on in terms of having this discussion because we seem to be going in a little bit different direction in terms of the two boards, the two Commissions. And it would be good to have this discussion because I know we're going to have this problem again in the future, and it'd be good to head it off with some type of policy discussion.
I'll see if there's room on that agenda. I think, I heard you say the purpose of the meeting is to try to discuss the competing goals of design versus energy efficiency and solar panels and things like that?
That's correct.
I'll see if there's room on that agenda.
Thank you very much. Ms. Larson, you've been patient.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. That's such an unusual thing for me when I have something really important to say. No, I just want everybody to know that one of the things I had available at HLC that I was jealous of was a new brochure about community guide to tree planting, to the urban forest. And so that's available at Parks and Rec, probably for some nominal little fee, but it is a publication we have now to help people plan what they're going to plant so that you understand what you're doing when you do it. So I think that would be a very, I'm sorry, they only have three copies at HLC, and I was in the audience, not at the Dia, so I was unable to bring it for show and tell. But the Street Tree Advisory Committee is making progress on the urban forest master plan, which is underway. So that was in support of that.
Okay.
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
Ms. Lodge, I saw your light on as well. If you want to...
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Water Commission continues working on the long-term water supply plan, and this is the latest version. They will be discussing it one more time, and then there will be a joint Water Commission and City Council meeting in April for its presentation. I was going through some old water files and found this City of Santa Barbara newsletter that's from 1991, winter 1991, and talks about being semi-arid climate and how we always have to keep an eye on water supply, and it's always been an issue, and they've had a study and looked at the different alternatives, and said the options are, first, the City Council called in its water experts to determine the city's water needs, the final tally, a total of 19,700 acre-feet needed by the year 2009. Now, we are at 2011, and last year, we, the city, it's kind of a problem, a financial problem in a way for the Water Department because 13,400 acre-feet of water were sold rather than the anticipated 13,800, and of course, you still have to have all the staff and all the maintenance going on, whatever the amount of water being sold is. But I think it's wonderful, and they're going to try to present in this long-term water supply plan how that happened, and it's been largely conservation and changes in state law requirements and plumbing codes and so on that have really reduced the amount of water that we each individually use. So I think it's wonderful that we've been able to do that.
Thank you. Any other committee or liaison reports? Hearing none, I find ourselves at the end of our agenda. So without further ado, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
We are adjourned. Thank you.